And I see no further hands up, so let's go ahead and move on to our COVID-19 update, our 9:06 AM item. And with us today, we have Dr. Charlie Evans. Welcome, and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can. You're a little light, not sure if Sam needs to increase the volume.
Great. I think we'll start off because we want to put the slides on the happy briefing from Sarah Marica, so we can put those up.
I believe that Mr. Rothstein has that capability and most likely has access to that.
Do you have them, Matthew?
I don't have the slides at this time.
Hang on just a second. Let me, so Charlie, I have them, but I, it may be from a week ago. Was there, were there new ones yesterday?
Yeah, there were new ones yesterday. I can send them to you real quick.
Yeah, if you'll email them to me, I'll project them. Thank you.
A second. They come. So while those are coming up, I'll just start my, my talk. Now, and before we dive into all the stuff we're going to talk about today, I want to talk about the big picture of where I think this is all going, and we step back and take a look at it. Now, we're two years into the pandemic, and everyone is completely sick of it, sick of SARS-CoV-2, sick of masks, sick of all the isolation, and we all want to return to normal. And I don't think there's anybody who feels more that way than all the healthcare workers in Lake County. But the stark reality is that the virus is not really letting us turn our head and look the other way. It's got other, other plans. We passed the 800,000 mark of deaths this last month, and that's more than were killed in all the wars of our lifetimes, where we're one, two, Rio, Vietnam, Persian Gulf, Afghanistan, put together. And we must remind ourselves that so many of those people who died, loved ones that are missed to this day, there are lots of, lots of suffering going on. The estimate of 50 million infections in our country is probably an underestimate of how many people have been infected. So when you look at this and then you hear that another strain is coming, it's far more infectious, it makes us all appear very anxious, and we worry about what that will mean. And so I'll talk about what we know and what we don't know, but it looks like the slides are up, so let me go over the slides. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this is a very dramatic slide that actually got last night. So this is just fresh off the press. So the orange is Delta and the purple is Omicron. And that second to last bar, the date down there is 12/11, and the last bar is 12/18. So this is weekly data taken on national surveillance to the CDC, looking at what percent of the variants, what percent of the virus are the various variants. And so you can see up and through the 4th of December, it was almost 100% Delta. And then starting in the week of December 11th, it came up to about 10% Omicron, and suddenly, last week, it's almost 70% Omicron. And if you break this down by region, there are regions of the country where it's over 95%. For example, up in the Northwest right now, 95% of the infections are Omicron, and that's true up in the New England area as well. And this is data that just came out yesterday. So, you know, when I saw this, I was just completely blown away by how fast Omicron is taking over Delta. So let's go to the next slide. So this is data from where we are in California, and the testing positivity increased after Thanksgiving holiday, then decreased again. It's now back on the increase. We had daily case rate increase after Thanksgiving was up to 47%, which caused the state to go back to a mandate for masks indoors. It declined slightly to 13.1 per 100,000, and, but now it's back on the rise again. Our testing is 2.8% positive in the state. So let's go to the next slide. So the orange line is Lake County, the blue line is the state. So you can see, right in the middle, there is where Thanksgiving is. You saw that rise after Thanksgiving, then it declined, and now it's back on the rise. Hospitalizations have increased statewide from around 3,400 patients per day to 3,900 per day in the last three weeks, so the hospitals are starting to fill up again. Next slide. So we're learning a lot about Omicron. Actually, I think that there's more data coming in than anyone can digest, but it's doubling time. We initially thought it was in four days. Data is pretty clear, it doubles in two days. So this is very, very fast. Omicron appears to have the growth advantage over Delta, and I think by, well, if you look at it now, it's the dominant variant in the United States by that data. And the sampling here is probably around 15% of the cases that are sent in are sampled, so, you know, I think this is accurate data. The reason Omicron appears to have a growth advantage over Delta is, one, there's some immune escape or waning immunity to vaccines. I'll talk more about that. The vaccine is still protective against Omicron, but likely not as, as effective, and we'll talk about that, too. So next slide. So severity is something that still is not fully understood. Omicron has a similar severity as Delta, we think, but we still need more data. And even with similar severity of Delta, the concern about Omicron is its high infectivity rate and the numbers of people that will be infected because of the waning immunity and the loss of immunity from previous infection. So there's great concern about a big flood of cases. Next slide. So Omicron is displaying a reduction in immune protection, and we'll talk about that. Boosters are ineligible people significantly increase the immunity and reduce risk. So this is one of the big take homes from the top today, is how important boosters are for everyone. And we'll talk more about that next. So the vaccine coverage in, in Lake County, we have about 33% unvaccinated, 60% fully vaccinated, and 7% that are partially vaccinated. Next slide. And the age breakdown, if you look at the last bar there, the 65-plus were, were 76% vaccinated, which is good. There's another 7% or so that are partially vaccinated, 17.7% are unvaccinated. These are the high-risk people that are really at risk of getting sick and requiring hospitalization. The other thing on this slide, if you look at the first bar, is the children, 5 to 11-year-olds, only vaccinated 5%. And this is an area where we're vulnerable. Next slide. So there's more than 9,000 Lake County residents that have received a booster in the past week. 1,000 received a booster. That's about 25% of the fully vaccinated people who have been boosted. Unfortunately, if you look at the 65 and older group, 59% of those have been boosted. Next slide. So the cases were down in November compared to the three previous months. Cases more likely to be younger people, 20 to 34, and then 65-plus in November than in the previous three months. The cases were also more likely to be white non-Hispanics in November than in the previous three months, and the cases were evenly distributed over the five supervisory districts. Next slide. So the risk factors for the protected, projected surge, you know, I'm sure Omicron is in Lake County. I haven't heard of an identified case, but I'm sure it's there. We have a lower daily case rate now, but the projections expect significant increases in the next several weeks. And compared to the state, Lake County is at higher risk for such a surge because of our vaccination rate is lower, and because our boosted rate is lower. Next slide.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, good. So I want to talk about what we know about Omicron and what we don't know. You know, when we look at variants of concern, you're looking at three things. Their transmissibility, their severity of illness, and whether they evade immunity from prior infection and from vaccines. The transmissibility news is not good. As I mentioned, it doubles in two days. This is highly, highly infectious. It's airborne. It's potentially two, two to four times as infectious as Delta, which we thought was a very highly infectious organism. This is known and proven by experience from South Africa, the Netherlands, Denmark, and England. So this is all good data. The transmissibility is no question very, very rapid. Severity of illness, as I mentioned, we still don't have enough data to say how sick one can get from the strain. The early reports from South Africa were encouraging and suggested that although it was highly infectious, people weren't getting as critically ill. Part of that is the data was skewed in that the South Africa's patients that were getting sick were much younger. The experience from England suggests that you can get just as sick as you can from Delta. And there's also a suggestion that there's more hospitalization of children with the Omicron variant than with the Delta variant. This may also be because of the sheer numbers of people that are becoming infected because it's so much more infectious. With regard to the immune escape, we have significant data to suggest that if you suffered a SARS-CoV-2 infection before, you have a three to eight times more likelihood of being infected with Omicron and with the Delta. Said differently, the immunity from past infections may not protect you from Omicron infection. If you recall, the mRNA vaccines, when they first came out, each had an efficacy of 90%. Studies from Europe suggest that the efficacy rate after just two vaccines is maybe as low as 30% because of the waning immunity. However, if you boost, the efficacy can go up to 70%. And some people say your, your actual immunity can go up 25 times from boosting. That is huge information that we need to act on. The boosting is just so incredibly important with Omicron. And that should be your impetus to go out and get your booster. I think it's important to understand, try to understand why Omicron is so different than the other SARS-CoV-2 virus variants. They did a study in Japan, and they looked at the virus when they infected the human respiratory tract. This is in culture in a lab, and it reproduced much, much faster in the bronchus than it did, than the Delta variant and other variants did. But it produced much, much slower down in the lung tissue back down where the, the air is exchanged in the lung. And so the thought is, is that because it produces so much faster in the bronchus, which is kind of the freeway that goes into the lung, that you're shedding much more virus, and that's why it's so much more infectious. And then the fact that it doesn't, doesn't reproduce so well down in the lung may explain that, that that's why you don't get as sick with it. So, you know, I'm an optimist. I'm really hoping that this is going to come out, that you don't get as sick with this variant as you do with, with the Delta. But it's just too early to tell. Looking at that slide with the purple and the yellow in the beginning, I think it's safe to say that Omicron is here. Public health is working on testing wastewater. We'll probably start testing wastewater in Clear Lake in January, and then extend that to other population centers later in the month, so that we have a good idea of how much virus we have circulating in the community. Where are our vulnerabilities with, with Omicron? We saw last June that we had a rapid rise, in fact, one of the fastest in the state in terms of morbidity and mortality because our vaccination was low in June. Our vaccination rate is now higher, but it's still not high enough to ward off a surge. Vermont, which is the most highly vaccinated state, and the Union at 75% is undergoing a surge now, and that's probably Omicron. We have plenty of people who are unvaccinated and without prior Delta infection to have a second surge in Lake County. We currently, as I mentioned, stand around 60% vaccinated, 33% no vaccination, 7% with partial vaccination. In that group over 65, there's 19% or 17% who have had no vaccination at all. So that, that's, that's probably our most vulnerable spot. Boosting, we're, we're, we need to be more boosted. We're 25% boosted. 9,000 people have received a boost. Fortunately, 59% of those over 65 have got a boost. I mentioned, too, we're lagging in our childhood immunizations. 5% of the 5 to 11-year-olds have been vaccinated. This is the group that requires supervision when they're not in school, the 5 to 11-year-olds. Oftentimes, this falls to the grandparents or older people who aren't working. And this is how the infection spreads into that older group. So we really need to push to get the five-year-olds and up vaccinated. With a variant as infectious as Omicron, it's likely that when it hits, we're going to see a vertical spike in cases, not the slow little rise that the current, the current graph showed. No one will be immune to that spike, including teachers and healthcare workers. The staffing, schools, and hospitals is going to be difficult. If all those infected require 10 days of quarantine, regardless of how sick they are, I think you can all imagine, you know, how to run a hospital when, when your healthcare workers are going out sick. Right now, we're having a hard time staffing just because of the, the past crunch. So what we can do, you know, I can't, can't say enough how important it is to get vaccinated. If someone in your family is not vaccinated, it's incumbent upon you to work on them, to get them vaccinated. I don't think Omicron is going to let anybody who's unvaccinated avoid getting it. It's that infectious. So, but for those that are vaccinated, boosting, if you haven't been boosted, this is a real opportunity. I mean, you can get a 25 times increase in your immunity from that, that boost, and that's absolutely critical. A list of vaccination and testing sites, and I think we can put that up maybe after the presentation, so people know, know where to go, but it's http://health.co.lake.ca.us backslash. So that's where all the testing sites and where the vaccination sites are, where you can go. And I might add, too, that flu vaccine is out there. We're seeing influenza A and influenza B, more A than B. We're also seeing RSV and common cold viruses. Now, this is difficult because when people come in, and they're febrile, last year, we didn't see any flu. This year, we're seeing it, and we don't know what is what. So getting the flu vaccine is going to help us long-term in preventing us from going into overwhelming the hospitals. So the other things that we can do, we've talked about, we've talked about masking, not only masking, but good masking. So the most preferable is E95. The K95 is second best. These are exponentially more effective than cloth mask or a bandana. So if, if you can use those in this critical period where we're looking at the Omicron surge, I think it will be safer. The other thing we're promoting is testing. Antigen tests are available in pharmacies now, and they're going to be many more available soon. And if you think about what gatherings you're having, and if there are people who are vulnerable to severe illness going to those gatherings, even if you are vaccinated, you should test before going to those gatherings because that's going to prevent those people from getting sick. And we just need to beware. As you hear about rising contagion and infection rates in the community, take caution to protect those at high risk. This can take many forms from masking, testing, avoiding indoor gatherings, and anything you can do to minimize exposure. We've talked about ventilation, anything you can do to increase ventilation in your home. If you have a high-risk person in your home, getting a filtering purification system for them will also help them. I wanted to say something about the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, also known as VAERS. This came up at a prior presentation. And VAERS was raised in a prior presentation by a citizen that it's evidence that the vaccines are not safe. So I wanted to say, VAERS is a passive reporting system. Anyone can report. It relies on individuals to send in reports of their experiences to the CDC. Providers are obligated to report serious adverse reactions to VAERS. VAERS is not designed to determine if a vaccine caused a health problem, but it is especially useful for detecting unusual or unexpected patterns of adverse event reporting. Such patterns are then investigated to see if a causal relationship exists. This system has been in operation for 30 years and is our country's way of transparently collecting information that might identify a safety problem. With over 495 million vaccines administered, 495 million, very few safety problems have been identified. The benefit of vaccines far outweighs the risks, which are mine. So although there's a lot of hype and anxiety about this new variant, we are not back to where we are. And I think a lot of people think, oh my God, here we go again, we're back to the beginning. We're not. We know far more about the behavior of COVID-19 than we did two years ago. We're better at preventing it. We're better at treating it. And we also have new therapeutics on the horizon. The FDA has spoken about several new drugs that are likely to be released very soon through an emergency use authorization. They're very difficult to pronounce, but one is Molnupiravir, which is a Mark product. It has been shown in a phase three clinical trial of over 1,400 people to half the hospitalization rate and half the death rate. Very promising for, for people who are at high risk of severe disease. Molnupiravir is also licensed in Europe, and it's expected to be licensed here very soon. There's another medication by Pfizer, Paxlovid, if I pronounce that right, also shows high clinical promise and is coming down the pike. In addition, we have the monoclonal antibodies. Now, some of those monoclonal antibodies are not as efficacious against the Omicron as the others. We're still doing research on that, and we don't know about that, but there are some that are effective. So we do have other treatments to use for people who become infected. So in conclusion, what will this winter bring? I think the experts are drinking COVID data through a virus boost on a daily basis, and each day, new light is shed on this disease. I don't think anyone can predict where we're going and what the next few months is going to entail. I can't say with confidence that we're going to be struggling with this Omicron variant for some months to come. I think the information that I've given you today should be helpful to help you get ready to celebrate your winter holiday. Currently, we think most of the cases in, in Lake County are Delta. I have to rethink that, looking at that first slide that we saw that I received last night. You know, it may be that we're, we're already having a majority of our cases be Omicron, and we just don't know it. As the highly infectious Omicron variant enters the battlefield, and if there's any doubt that it's going to overcome the Delta variant, if Omicron is not as virulent as the Delta variant, this could be a good thing. Time will tell us. Past pandemics have burned out based on variants that were more infectious and less virulent. However, we just don't know how this will play out at this time. So I'm keeping my optimism. Until then, I think we're safest by exercising patience and doing what we know works best, which is vaccinating, boosting, masking, testing, and using common sense to keep the contagion away from us and those we love. So with that, I'd like to open it to your comments or questions.
Dr. Evans, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you to Sarah's work as well. Wondering if we can turn, thank you very much. I was going to ask you for a clarification before opening it up for questions and comments from board members. At one point, you said it's, it's hard to diagnose between the flu or COVID. I'm guessing that that means on first glance, when they come into the hospital, but there is a test that can tell the difference, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. And we know, you know, rapid testing, you know, within an hour. But, but when a patient presents to a doctor's office, clinic, or ER, they can look very similar until you test them. But yes, we can determine the difference between the two.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that because of the comment that you made. Thank you. So let's go ahead and open it up for any comments or questions board members may have. And I see none. I think we'd like to hear from the public. Let's go ahead and start with phone 2689.
Hello, board of supervisors, can you hear me?
Yes, please provide us your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Christina Robertson. For months, men and women have brought data to your attention. I know you've received emails asking you to review the evidence provided concerning the dangers and fallacies around the quote, "safe and effective" vaccine. Evidence from the government's own Center for Disease Control website. You've been informed of the many reported injuries documented on the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, VAERS, also on the CDC website, and of the very high survival rate, or in other words, low death rate from COVID. According to the CDC, 94.9% of COVID deaths also have serious comorbidities such as obesity, diabetes, high blood pressure, and others that can be vastly improved by lifestyle changes, thus greatly lowering the chance of death from COVID. We're not seeing mandates for healthy living or organic food growing. Children are not at all at risk, and yet are being subjected to intrusion on their bodies and psychological bullying daily in their schools. This travesty is not about healthcare. COVID is not the killer of these poor folks who have died. Serious comorbidities, inappropriate protocols, and neglect of common sense early intervention is the culprit. If there was a true pandemic, we would be seeing people on our left and on our right dropping before our eyes. You know of the refusal of Pfizer to release trial data for 55 years when they were able to approve the so-called vaccine in only 108 days. You know of the censorship and the fact that 75% of ad money for mainstream network news comes directly from the pharmaceutical companies. Safe and effective, huh? According to the New England Journal of Medicine, something around 70 to 80% of pregnant women under 80, under 20 weeks pregnant who received the vaccine have miscarriages. Young athletes have dropped dead on the sports field after vaccination. Myocorditis is a real and verifiable danger from the vaccine with a sad projected outcome within five years. We come here to speak to power. That's you. You are elected officials who have the power to refuse to go along with this blind unquestioning You are elected officials who have the power to refuse to go along with this blind unquestioning march toward totalitarianism. So my questions, have you looked at the reports you've been sent? The lawsuits, the vaccine injure who testified to the FDA in Washington? Have you thought about the obvious inconsistencies in logic banning the unvaccinated? And when the vaccinated can transmit? Are you aware of healthy 12-year-old Maddie DeGrae, who is in a wheelchair for the rest of her life? The man who thought he was doing the best for his son and his young son died. No one should be coerced to take these vaccines to protect others.
If you can get to your last comment.
Which it doesn't have the risk of their own life. Have you really considered the meaning of what you're doing and what you're not doing? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Carlos Bono.
Good morning. I wanted to read from a, a letter from renz-law.com. Uh, Mr. Renz is, uh, presenting this letter before public officials on the state and local and federal level. It says, "To whom it may concern, we, the free and united people of America and the world, are writing in regards to unlawful and corrupt actions taken by the healthcare industry, bureaucrats, and media regarding COVID-19. The actions taken for nearly two years now have stripped people of their rights, decimated the U.S. Constitution, violated the principles of international law embodied in the Nuremberg Code, and ignored basic and inalienable human rights. The people behind this have leveraged their privileged positions to make billions of dollars at the expense of humanity and are unwilling to allow this to continue. And we are unwilling to allow this to continue. For decades, the field of public health has researched the use of fear as a tool to manipulate people into action. The use of that tool has now been perfected and implemented against the people of the world with COVID-19. Evidence of this knowledge can be found in a CDC presentation, other DHHS materials, and numerous academic journals. The intentional use of fear to sow hate, division, and discord is unethical and unacceptable and must stop immediately. The reality is that COVID-19 has a 99-plus percent recovery rate in most of the population and approximately a 94% recovery rate in the most vulnerable. Compare this to the original SARS, which had approximately a 9% case fatality rate, and the original MERS, which had over a 30% case fatality rate. We did not lock down, mask, or even widely acknowledge these diseases when they were prevalent despite the fact that they had similar rates of spread to COVID-19. The fear has been used as a marketing tool to attempt to justify previously unthinkable actions by bureaucrats and public health officials around the world. The most egregious of which is the forced injection of gene therapy drugs into a healthy people. What happened? Gene therapy literally alters the genetic makeup of a human being and simply cannot legally, morally, or aesthetically be forced on anyone ever. If the decision to alter one's own genetic makeup does not rest with the individual, there can be no argument that freedom is lost. Not only are the COVID vaccines admittedly a gene therapy, they are inarguably unsafe. The swine flu vaccine was pulled from the market after over, just over 20 deaths. The Chevy Volt was recently recalled over the potential for battery fires, but the Pfizer shot was given expanded authorization despite the high recovery rate from COVID-19 and the fact that Pfizer's own documents submitted to the DHHS shows that over 1,200 people died in less than the first three months of authorization. This is nothing more than corruption. The COVID shots are also ineffective. A recent Department of Defense document stated that 71% of new cases of COVID-19 in the Medicare population are in fully vaccinated individuals, and 60% of hospitalizations are in fully vaccinated. The same document also stated that injections are even less effective in North American natives.
And your three minutes are up. If you can get to your last comment.
Yes, I would, uh, urge the Board of Supervisors and all public officials who are elected to their offices, uphold their oath of office, uphold the Constitution, and serve the public as they were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julia Bono.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please give us your name and you have three minutes.
Uh, okay. My name is Julia Bono. I have a background in degrees in scientific research. I wanted to speak to the board and this audience today about the harms caused by the currently available COVID-19 vaccines that have been reported to the CDC's Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, or VAERS, database that Dr. Evans mentioned. Since many of these are severe harms associated with COVID vaccination, healthcare providers are legally required to report them, although some official estimates, like the Lazarus report, suggests that as few as 1% of adverse events are actually reported. The latest VAERS data through December 10th, 2021, shows there have been a total of 20,244 deaths, 106,129 hospitalizations, 106,308 urgent care visits, 151,187 doctor office visits, 8,516 anaphylaxis, uh, events, 12,127 Bell's palsy events, including, uh, a gentleman that I know personally whose face was paralyzed for two months after his vaccination. Um, the total of 965,841 reports. Severe adverse, reported adverse events reported, occurring shortly after the administration of the vaccines also include, uh, 3,297 miscarriages, um, at a vastly higher rate among, uh, women than had previously been observed. 10,229 heart attacks, 19,039 myocarditis pericardiasis events, um, which is especially noticeable among young people, um, and hence they shouldn't be vaccinated. 33,975 permanently disabled individuals, 4,807 thrombocytopenia, low platelet events, 22,953 life-threatening events, 35,229 severe allergic reactions, and 11,129 shingles events. All vaccine-related deaths reported in 2020 were just 421, while this year has already seen reports of over 20,000 vaccine-related deaths, and it's not over yet. With respect to the timeframe from COVID vaccination to death reported, the substantial majority of cases died within two days of vaccination. I also wish to testify that I personally know, um, another individual, um, who had a heart attack uh, two days after taking the Moderna vaccine due to a blood clot in her, her heart that resulted in her urgent hospitalization and subsequent retirement. My emphatic contention is that these experimental COVID vaccines should not be misrepresented to the public as safe. Um, people are taking risks clearly when they take these, nor should members of the public be encouraged, pressured, and/or mandated to take these vaccines if they prefer not to and are understandably concerned about adverse vaccine events versus the risk of actually getting COVID, which is asymptomatic to mild in the vast majority of cases and hardly ever fatal among minors. I firmly further contend that virtually everyone already knows that COVID vaccines exist, so if they have not taken one by this point, they probably don't want to. For those who wish to stand up for medical freedom in Lake County so that we continue to have the choice as to how we respond to our medical.
Finish your last comment.
They can visit, uh, the website, www.standuplakecounty.org, and can sign the petition, uh, to the Board of Supervisors on that site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Phone 4627.
Oh, good morning. This is Tom Slate, uh, Supervisor Sabatia. First of all, thank you. Uh, I will point out that I had emailed you about a half an hour before the meeting, 10 questions that I was gonna bring at the meetup now, but you got back to me so quickly and answered all of them. I was really impressed with that. I'm very pleased. So thank you for doing that. They were COVID questions. But, uh, my comments are that we keep hearing about getting injected, and we hear so little about what is, there's this overwhelming amount of information about early treatment. Ibuprofen, hydroxychloroquine, and, uh, and others. That as far as I know, I wonder if, are people getting them or are people even being informed of that? But, uh, now I'll leave it at that. That's just a comment. But I, so I am concerned, or my question is, how are people being treated? My understanding, um, and, and I'll say this again, these are my thoughts. People can think whatever they want. I'm not here to convince, to push anybody's arm. But that the standard of care, uh, is remdesivir in hospitals? And if it's not, you know, what is, how are people being treated? What are they getting? And my concern is if, in remdesivir, but, uh, so I'll leave that at the question for, uh, Dr. Evans. Could you comment on that?
Thank you for your question. Uh, Dr. Evans, uh, can you respond?
Sure. So remdesivir is the preferred treatment. Also, uh, patients are treated with steroids to increase their own, uh, immune reaction uh, to the virus. A big part of the problem that comes with COVID is that our own immune systems, uh, are very, um, reactive to the virus and respond with a flooding of fluid into the lungs that the steroids tend to help if given early enough. Uh, so people who are, are, are efficient on oxygen that require hospitalization are given, uh, those two agents when they, uh, go into the hospital. Another thing that's been very useful is, is proning them, which means lying on your stomach versus lying on your back. If you lie on your back, you tend to have more collapse of the lung and, uh, the fluid tends to locate more in the posterior aspects of your lung and you tend to go into respiratory failure faster. So spending time sleeping on your stomach is also very effective.
And if possible, um, related to the question, would you be able to, uh, discuss what's going on, um, at the FDA and the, uh, looking to, uh, some of the upcoming treatments? I know Merck is working on one. I believe we've spoken about it before. Just wondering if you can provide us some comments on that.
Yes, so there's, Merck is, uh, again, the names are very hard to pronounce, but it's Molnupurivir, which is the Merck drug. And that went through a phase three, uh, clinical trial. Uh, there were over 1,400 patients. Uh, it was a double-blind randomized trial with 700, uh, or more patients in each group. And the group that got the, uh, drug had half the hospitalization rate and, uh, half the death rate. Um, so it looks very promising. It is a nucleoside drug, um, and, uh, shouldn't be used in, uh, pregnant women or women, uh, planning on becoming pregnant, uh, soon. That would be the main condescendation.
And then would you be able to, uh, provide, uh, some context to the monoclonal treatments? Um, I know that they're not available everywhere, um, and not sure if that's due to insurance coverage or other reasons, uh, but I know that it, that is something that is used, uh, in, in places.
So there's, there's a number of different monoclonal antibody treatments. Um, and these are being looked at to see how effective they are for Omicron. They were, uh, some of them were quite effective for Delta. Uh, again, they should be given early on in the course of the disease. So if you are one of those people with comorbidities that becomes infected, um, that's something you should call your doctor and see if you're eligible for that treatment. And, uh, you know, as each day goes by, we learn more about which are most effective. Um, and again, you know, it's the drinking from the fire hose of data that's coming out. But, um, there are a number of different, uh, monoclonal antibody treatments out there, not all of which are readily available, um, but some of them are. And that's something that your primary care physician should be able to help you with.
Thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and move on to phone 1113.
Uh, yes, uh, this is Dr. Will Tull calling. And, um, I, I appreciate, uh, this discussion. I want to, again, emphasize, this is a pandemic of fear. We keep hearing so much about, uh, the, the new variant. And we don't hear about the basic facts that the CDC keeps saying over and over again, which is, first of all, that the COVID vaccine, 19 vaccine is not providing immunity. It does not eliminate the virus. It does not prevent death. It does not guarantee that you won't get it. It does not stop you from passing it on to other people. It does not eliminate mask wearing or social distancing. It does not eliminate the need for travel bans. It does not eliminate the need for business closures. It does not eliminate the need for lockdown. We, and now they're saying we need to have, uh, boosters for this, which will, according to the, um, Prime Minister of New Zealand, that will never end. She just announced that recently, that boosters will be going on forever. And so it's well documented in, uh, many places, including the new book by Robert F. Kennedy Jr., how pharmaceutical industry with its massive funding, profits and money, has captured this, the CDC and the NIH and NIAID and so forth. And that through that capture, also the mainstream media, uh, is creating a war against humanity. And I really am seriously, again, calling on the Board of Supervisors to not, uh, engage in crimes against humanity that are being, uh, inflicted upon people who are vulnerable and who are being not told the truth about the medications, so-called medications that they're being pressured into having. This is directly against the Nuremberg principles that we've been hearing. We're not learning about the tremendously effective responses that people have had with ibuprofen and with hydroxychloroquine and with fudasenol and so forth. That's been deliberately covered up. We have massive censorship happening on social media and in the mainstream media. And as you know very well, if there's censorship going on, it's, they're not censoring lies, they're censoring the truth. It's always liars who want to censor, right? There's a great saying by St. Augustine, "The truth is like a lion. Just let it be free and it can defend itself." So if we let the, the truth defend itself, then why do we have to have all this censorship of alternative views? There's been so many doctors and researchers, hundreds of thousands of them now, have signed documents, um, saying that we're not dealing with this properly, that, uh, it's a, a hoax and we're, and it's leading directly to the loss of our basic freedoms, which is much more of a serious problem than a health problem. Losing our basic freedoms and our basic rights, we won't pass on to future generations the cherished liberties that we have. So we are seeing, uh, a tremendous amount of violence being inflicted upon, uh, children, especially through not only these vaccines, which has been pointed out, are very harmful.
And your three minutes are up. If you can get your last comment.
And, well, I just want to say that, uh, we should really question the mask wearing. And I'll just say, even according to, uh, the New England Journal of Medicine, quote, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little of any protection from infection." So from many areas, we see that this, uh, approach is not working except to take away our freedoms and create huge profits for these industries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to speak real quick on this idea of fear mongering. I thought that Dr. Evans' information was very, um, not fear mongering. Uh, he was optimistic. Uh, he was letting us know that things do seem like they could be, uh, better than dealing with the Delta. There's the potential that it might be equal. But again, sharing optimism and moving forward. Uh, nobody has talked about, and in my opinion, will probably not be talking about lockdowns. Masks are not 100%, but they help. Uh, they, they at least reduce the potential. Weird that a mask works in healthcare but doesn't work outside of healthcare. I'm trying to figure out the logic on that one. And the fear mongering, but yet bringing out the Nazi Nuremberg trial and the loss of freedoms. I'm wondering which side the fear mongering is also coming from. I get it that, yes, uh, maybe actions taken, uh, in, during the pandemic may not have been the correct, appropriate action. I think people were trying to do the best to save lives. Uh, and I think those things can be debatable, but, uh, some of these comments are ludicrous, continue to come to our board. And the data that you're using is not reliable data. And in fact, thank you for the book from Robert F. Kennedy. That is the most fear mongering book I've ever seen in my life. Uh, so please, um, I, I want to have a conversation. This is not dialogue in the way that we're being approached. Uh, approach us outside of the meeting and have a conversation, uh, because this is, this is not a way to, uh, move forward. Thank you. And with that, it looks like we're done with public comment. We have public comment in the board chambers, so let's go ahead. And did you have something to say Supervisor Scotty? Okay.
John Moss, I read Robert Kennedy's book. I do not think it is fear mongering. I think it is well documented. Everything he says has the person and the place and the article to refer to. I want to ask Dr. Evans, do you happen to know the number of Lake County people who have come down with cancer since they have been vaccinated? Can you find that out for us? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that comment slash question. Uh, we do have a comment from Supervisor Pisca.
Dr. Evans, thank you for your report today. It's, it's wonderful to see you again, even though these are, um, it's a difficult conversation. We're all tired, as you mentioned. Um, this is not the place that we thought that we would be in. We don't know what's gonna happen. I appreciate your optimism. But I just, I, I want to remember the 115 people that have died in Lake County and the 900,000 people that have died around our country and the healthcare workers that have left their professions this year. I had a really dear friend. I had a really dear friend of mine who had to walk away from her job at Adventist because she couldn't, she said she got into this profession to help people, but all she was doing was putting her patients in body bags. And that was in October. So we don't know what's gonna happen over the next few weeks and few months, but we do know our healthcare workers are going to stand their ground as best they can and do everything in their power to protect us and help us through whatever may happen. And I want to just send, send them our best wishes. Remember them in our hearts and the families that are suffering. This has been a very, very difficult time and it's not over. And we just, we have to continue to dig deep and have patience.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments from the board? Also closed public comments, so bringing it back for any further comments. Dr. Evans, thank you very much for your time today and your update. And we'll look forward to seeing you again in the next year. And hopefully, things will continue to go as good as they are right now because our numbers are looking good. I know that I've been looking at them and comparing it to some of the other areas that we're doing well, such as San Francisco and Marin. And we are definitely, as far as the numbers go, coming out of our state Department of Public Health, we are definitely looking good in comparison to the rest of the state of California at this moment, and I hope that we can remain that way.
I do too. I do too. And thanks for all the work you guys do on this.
Yep. Happy holidays.